I'm Tanya Graham, I'm the Executive Director of the Geos Institute.
And I'm Cindy Deacon-Williams, a Senior Fellow with the Institute.
Okay. They asked for an opportunity to sit down with the Board of Commissioners and explain what their organization is doing. There's been some less than favorable, well, I don't know if I know a great word. Anyway, misunderstandings or maybe understandings, whatever. But they wanted the opportunity to come in and share what they and their organization was doing. So, ladies?
All right. Well, the first thing I would like to do is send Brian Barr's apologies. He is our restoration manager. He does a lot of the work locally here related to Fish Passage Restoration. And he was planning to attend today until his daughter, who was at horse camp, her host family had an emergency and so he had to go down to California and get her to a different place. So, he sends his apologies. He had planned to attend and was looking forward to the conversation. So, as Commissioner Skenderick mentioned, we have had several really strong partnerships in the past with the county. We've done a lot of good work. And there was a misunderstanding that in last year created a situation where the county staff is not allowed at this point to work with Geos Institute to partner with us. And so, we met, as you all know, we met individually with each of the commissioners to find out which of your concerns were and to clear up the misunderstanding. And so, I don't know how much, what you want to do, but we want to answer any questions that you have. I don't know what format you'd like to meet.
Well, I think that'll be it. And I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
Okay. Because I'm one of those who are locally unhappy with Geos, or what I thought Geos was doing or was going. And I got to tell you, it's been underlined recently, seeing that Geos is again a co-litigator against the timber sale.
We're not litigating anything. What did you see?
I wish I'd have clipped out the newspaper clip. Your organization was named amongst others. And it just, I have a hard time doing business with an organization that on one hand, and I do know, I'll give you credit for your restoration work and all that, but on top of that, working, what I feel in my own personal opinion is counterpurposeful to what we're trying to do here as Board of Commissioners and increase the harvest opportunities in our national forests. And I just have a, I have difficulty. When you were into the office and we talked about that, you at that time assured me that that wasn't happening.
It actually isn't. We're not partying to a lawsuit.
I would love to find out what that is because we have not filed suit against anybody in the last two weeks.
Just the last two weeks.
Was it in the Mail Tribune? And it was for sale? We, well, so maybe what would be helpful to do is to talk a little bit about that program. Because that, we have three programs at the Geos Institute. Our Green Solutions Program, our Climate Wise Program, and our Forest Program. And the Forest Program really is the place where if we're going to have any disagreements with the county, that's where it's going to be. Obviously, the restoration work that we do is very collaborative. The Green Solutions work that we do is also very collaborative. And so is our Climate Wise work, which is really about helping communities understand the impacts of climate change and helping them adapt to it. So, the place where if there's going to be conflict, there will, it would sit, is where you bring it up, Commissioner, and that is in our Forest Program. Our Forest Program has focused since 2006, since the merger that created the new organization, it has focused on higher level policy work. So, you know, policy that impacts the whole Pacific Northwest much, much more than anything that's locally on the ground. At that point, essentially, all the work that we were doing on local tracking of forest land management, we basically just let them run themselves out and we didn't re-up on any litigation. And we didn't start any new litigation. We're not able to, we wouldn't be able to file suit without getting our board permission. We'd always have to take that to them if we were going to file suit. And we have not taken anything to them in years. And so, I'm, I will go find.
Shame on me for not having.
Well, I'll go find it.
I think, I think I probably know what you're talking about because there was an article fairly recently about, I'm not even sure what the sale was, but there is, there was an article in the Mail Tribune within the last couple of weeks about the timber sale that is being litigated. I don't think it mentioned Geos. It mentioned Cascade of Wildlands, it mentioned a bunch of those.
Okay, well, Danny Jordan had something.
So, I have this, a timber bill could pollute drinking water at steady norms. And so, it's a timber bill that would support timber harvest, but essentially you're supporting the fact that it could harm drinking water. And it was on June 28th.
Supporting drinking water.
Supporting not harming drinking water from what this bill might be.
But, but it sounds like you're talking about something different.
Well, I thought so. My muddled mind, again, a shame on me for not having the particulars on this. I just saw it and boy, red flag jumped right up, especially after we'd had our conversation of two months ago.
Right. And that's, and I'm certainly happy to look it up and see if it's, if it is this article, we can certainly have that conversation. But, but there, part of the misunderstanding that came about actually was because of the way that we were put forward in the news media. If you recall, there was a TV news piece that was done that included Brian Barr. And we, he came back to the office and said, "I told him at least 15 times we weren't on the lawsuit." I don't know if it stuck. And of course, when it came out, they didn't say we were on the lawsuit, but they were traipsing around with our staff biologist and it just appeared that we were on that lawsuit. And it was pretty easy to see how anyone might be confused by that. And so, it's particularly important to me that I find out what this is because I take everything to the board that goes to the board, and I have not asked them to litigate anything in six years. And so, I really want to find out what the media is reporting that might be an error.
So, why don't you tell us about your policies then, when it regard on this forest wise? Why don't you, why don't you give us a brief synopsis of what your position, your organization's position?
Yeah, for the Forest Program. So, the work that we do is primarily geared to adapting and dealing with climate change. And so, in that, the Pacific Northwest forests are particularly strong at sequestering and storing carbon, particularly mature and old growth trees. And so, those are the focus of our work. We, and what that means is that when there's policy decisions being made about forest land management, public forest land management, we step in with our opinions about how that should be managed. And our opinion is very strong that mature and old growth forests should not be being harvested outside of places where there were plantations, say. That there's, there's a lot of places where there are mature trees and plantations that we think should be thinned, that that would be an okay thing to be doing. But for the most part, we would like to see forest management focus on smaller second growth trees. And thinning, and you know, thinning in urban interfaces, those sorts of places where roads have already been built, that sort of, that sort of focus. We are not a not one stick organization. We're not one of those organizations that says, you know, nobody should ever cut a single stick on public lands. But we, we believe very strongly that science tells us that those mature and old growth forests are particularly important for helping us deal with the effects of climate change.
And the way we put, yeah, the way we put forward our position and our opinions is not through litigation. Basically, it's through scientific review, doing new scientific research, and presenting the results of those reports to the decision makers. Like, like Tanya says, we have, since the organization has been sort of merged and recast and developed a new mission statement, so, what, six years ago, seven years ago? We have not become party to any lawsuit since then. What we have done is, is gathered expert witnesses, scientists from around the country together to go and talk to decision makers about what their research has said. We've done original research ourselves and shared the results of that with decision makers. You know, that's, that's kind of the format that we are in now, is bringing science to policy decisions on forest issues. And so, it's entirely likely that there could become, a situation could develop where there is a policy decision under consideration regarding, for instance, federal forest management, where the county would have a different opinion than we would be sharing with policymakers. But I don't think the fact that we have a difference of opinion on what the science is saying about a given issue should preclude us from being able to partner in situations where we have common goals. Particularly, I think, since, at least, our understanding is that one of the real sort of red flag concerns is whether or not litigation is used. And that's not a tool we have used since our, you know, new mission got developed. And we have worked with a lot of other partners in areas where we have common goals and simply agreed to disagree in areas where we don't have common goals without it affecting our ability to work with folks. And I think it probably is likely that in certain circumstances, we will have differences of opinion regarding federal land management. But we're very hopeful that a difference of opinion won't preclude our working together where we have common goals.
Okay. I'll reserve a couple more comments because I've done all this. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Tanya, you have a question. You know, in my mind, probably the one person that's done more to harm our local timber industry is Dominic Bell-Sala. Is he associated with your organization?
He's actually a scientist.
Yes.
Yeah. He's a scientist.
So, so he's on the payroll?
Yes.
Oh, I guess. Okay. All right. Well, I guess that's my concern. I mean, we, we enter into an agreement with you, we give you money for whatever project you do, and in theory, it funds someone that's going to, you know, to harm our timber industry.
Yeah. I was going to say, just one, one thing on that, if you, we've got some handout materials for you. In our partnership organizations, including the partnership projects that we've had with the county, we've brought more money to the table than any of our partners. And so, when we find situations where we're wanting to work together, really, one of the things that we can provide is fundraising for project implementation. If you look at like the restoration money, Tanya, you've got the numbers on that, for instance.
Yeah. So, for instance, with restoration projects, we've, working with our partners, have raised about $3.2 million over the last seven years for restoration projects. That's money being spent on construction firms and engineers to do restoration projects in the valley. We get our money, we get the money that funds our staff from other, from other sources, primarily foundations and donors. And so, there wouldn't be a situation where county money, even if it was coming in our direction, which it hasn't been, hasn't been the way it typically has worked, even if it were coming in our direction, it wouldn't be going towards Dominic because he doesn't work on restoration work. Money that comes in is segmented for the project in which it's, in which it's been approved for. But as Cindy says, it's what, the way that this typically works, particularly with our restoration work and how it's worked with the renewable energy work, is that we come together with a group of partners and then we jointly work to raise the money. And then, you know, the money gets divided up based on how the project partners have decided the money needs to go. And for the most part, we handle our own staff time and the money that we raise together is to pay for contractors and pay for people that are consulting with us, with the group, and doing on the groundwork.
So, for instance, on the, with the renewable energy project, which is one of the major recent projects, where we did an energy assessment countywide, and, what, we raised 100 and...
We raised 125,000 for that.
That we raised that was not spent on Geos staff or Geos work. The bulk of that went, you know, out.
73,000 of that went out. And that's, that's one of the things that we see as something that we can bring to these partnerships, is that there are certain funding pots that are available to nonprofits that are not available to local government entities or state government entities. And so, a big part of what we do, particularly in our restoration work, is, is raise funding to close the gap. So, say the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife might be able to bring in 30% of a project funding, but they need it to be matched. And maybe it's a private landowner and it's a dam that's not working on a creek and they, they need to show up with the rest of it, but they don't have that kind of money. We, we often work with private foundations and we explain to them why it's so important that this project get done. They fund what would essentially be the landowner's contribution and match for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. That money is money that we, we go out and raise because landowners are not in a position to raise it. They can't receive money, they're not a nonprofit. And the private foundations are not, don't typically give money to government entities. And so, that's, that role is the one that we typically take, particularly as it relates to restoration and renewable energy work.
And so, again, in this handout material, there's a list of all of the partners that we've had on restoration projects and the climate wise projects in the area. And you'll see a very diverse range of folks that we have worked with. And by and large, we've been funding, what we've brought to the table has been our staff time plus a significant proportion of the project implementation funds.
Doug?
How many members do you have?
We have...
How large is your organization?
Right. Right. So, we are not primarily a membership organization. We had been, back when we were, we were headwaters, we were grassroots organization at that point. And a big part of our, of our work was in grassroots organizing and, you know, and building membership, that sort of thing. So, what we have now is, we've got about 100 local people who support us because that's...
Through memberships.
Yeah, through memberships. And, and more of the money now comes from private foundations, some individual donors and contracts. So, we're definitely moving into, more into that contract space, looking with federal and state agencies.
What kind of contracts?
Well, a lot of them have been through the conservation cooperatives that the Fish and Wildlife Service have put together. So, we've got, we received several contracts through them to complete research or to, to host workshops around climate change adaptation is primarily how they come through. We, we have projects, depending on the program, we have projects that are made in states, and often the funding sources for those are the federal government. So, maybe NOAA is one of the places that we typically would request funding from. That's a big part of where, where that comes from. And then, we also, we've served as the fiscal sponsor for several restoration, pretty large restoration projects that have received, you know, OWEB funding and, you know, particularly, specifically restoration funding from NOAA, from OWEB, from those sorts of things.
From the federal, not from the state?
Oh, the state, OWEB is the Oregon Water Shutter, that would be coming into the state. And then, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, they, they come in with match. So, they don't fund us specifically, but they, they are able to put their money into the pot and then we go collect it from other places.
And then, with county governments in other states on a lot of the climate project stuff, so, several counties in California, Fresno and San Luis Obispo have done climate adaptation assessments. Actually, we did some work up in Deschutes County as well on that. And then, in Montana, we are in the early stages of similar kinds of work in Alaska, Colorado, Florida, Texas.
Can you give me an example of climate things that you're working on?
Sure. So, with our Climate Wise process, what we do is we work with local communities that are interested in finding out what climate change is likely to look like for their region. We are able to bring in the science and the projections that are specific to their local area that'll give them a sense of what they should be planning for. We, we then facilitate a process for them that's a community wide process, that's multi-sectoral, multi-stakeholder process, and help them come up with strategies that allow them to take the resources that they have to protect the things that are important to them. And so, it's, it's really a process of helping them identify what, what is really important to them economically, what's important to them socially, that makes them really, that makes them community what, what it is and why they want to live there. And then, helping them to understand what impacts climate change will have on that or likely to have on that. And then, how might they get out ahead of that so that they can reduce those impacts and do it in a way that is out ahead of it and is not responding to these changes as they come through. Which is why that they primarily are, our interest is coming a lot from the Gulf because they're already dealing with storm surge problems, intense storms, coastal erosion that is linked to climate change. And then, of course, up in Alaska is very similar, especially their coastal communities.
And a lot of the sort of inland west concerns really are associated with increased risks from wildfire, increased risks to water supply, you know, those kinds of things. And then, there's also a number of sort of health services related, these are risks. As you can imagine, some of the heat flashes and extended droughts that we've had, there's a lot of concerns about sort of with at-risk populations being subject to heat stress, you know, where and how might there be a need for establishing cooling centers, you know, that kind of thing. Because there's, and then interestingly enough, there's also a number of things, as you can imagine, associated with infrastructure. Because not only in the west are we looking at situations where we're likely to be experiencing extended droughts in a number of different areas, but in the winter, we're also looking at larger than normal storms. And so, many of the western communities are trying to deal with infrastructure problems associated with both high and low water circumstances. So, it's, you know, that kind of, kind of thing, looking at, you know, what are the risks from climate change and what can communities do to minimize their vulnerability to those risks?
Good.
Earlier, you mentioned policymakers separate from the county. I'm guessing by the way you used it in the context that you're referring to federal policymakers?
Yes. Predominantly, yes.
So, your predominant work is with the federal policymakers on the landscape, regional type concept?
Yeah. Our focus has been on public forest lands. And those are because of the way that they're managed, that they're managed by the federal level, and so that's where our policy focus has been.
Your internal policy as it pertains to public lands, do you, understanding that there is a difference between Forest Service or Department of Ag and Department of Interior, do you have separate policy on Forest Service lands versus BLM ONC lands?
Kind of yes and no, I guess. Our predominant interest, because of our new mission statement and mission focused on climate, our predominant interest on federal lands management really has to do with the nexus of the large forest and carbon sequestration. And so, the management focus that we have on federal forest lands really is focused predominantly on how can we manage our, our federal public lands to maximize climate benefits through carbon sequestration.
You just identified where, one of the areas where we're having a hard time overcoming that.
Yes.
Because there is a difference between forest lands and ONC lands.
Yes.
And it's defined very clearly by Congress.
Yes.
And so, that's why I'm sort of curious if you have separate policy on these lands because ONC lands are not forest lands.
Yeah. And that's kind of why I said yes and no. So, that, that carbon sequestration benefit of old forests is really the primary focus of our management, our management opinions and directions and science. What we do then is we take the science that talks about the benefits to carbon sequestration of old forests and bring it to the table in the policy context that is different between BLM lands and forest lands. The science doesn't change depending on who the landowners and managers are, but the policy context in which that science is applied is different. Does that make, you know, the...
From your perspective, I can understand what you're trying to say, but you have to understand the county's perspective. As we watch counties that are failing as a result of timber harvest or lack thereof, and frankly, the work that you might be doing might be, these counties' failure might be a direct result of some of the work you're doing. And I was wondering if you guys have taken that and looked at that as a possibility that you might be partially responsible for?
Well, yeah. Let me, let me take that one. That's a big question. How, how does government fund itself? How do people pay for services? Is a, is a question that we have to answer in communities all across the country, and different communities handle it in different ways. There is no question that the OEC lands and the way that the, the funding was structured with the federal government around those for many, many years, supported a vast amount of county government. There's, there's no question that that was what the system was.
It's currently still is.
Well, right, because, yeah.
The law hasn't changed.
Yeah. It's just every year, there's a big rush to...
I wouldn't infer it in the past tense because it is still current law.
Right. But with the secure rural schools piece, it's, it's the decoupling that's happened between ONC, the, the harvest and the money that the county gets.
It's all different things.
Okay. So, so what I would say about that is that the counties, at different points in, in the history of the community or states in the west, as broad as you want to take it, we sometimes have to come back to the table and look at, is what we are doing right now the best way forward? And back when there was, you know, timber, you know, old growth timber as far as you could see, there wasn't necessarily so much of a reason to, to be protecting it. And at that point, maybe the highest and best use for the community was to, was to be harvesting it at those levels, that that made sense at that time. What we would say now is knowing what we know about the situation that we're in with climate change, there is, there is new information for us to be considering and new financing structures that we might want to be looking at to make sure that we're taking care of the full community. I don't think those are bad conversations to have. And what I would say in terms of counties is, there are, there are challenges that come up throughout the course of managing a county, managing a city. There are financial crunch points that hit for a variety of different reasons. We need to figure out the best way, the best system going forward that does, that does all those things. We are not opposed to jobs in the woods. We don't have a problem with jobs in the woods. We're focused on mature and old growth trees that we think serve the community best by remaining standing. And that's really where the, the conversation gets to. Now, how you fund county governments within this understanding is a place where that, that has to be taken up, particularly in places that have been so dependent on federal money coming in, in that exchange around forests.
And I think it's, it's really important to also know that for Geos, the fact that there are carbon sequestration benefits that are scientifically, you know, the, the science indicates that there are large carbon sequestration benefits by maintaining mature and old growth trees standing in the woods, does not mean that the organization opposes all timber harvest in the woods. And, and that's why I say, so what we do is we take the science that indicates the benefits that we get from mature and old growth trees standing in the woods, and we take that science to the policy discussion at the federal level on Forest Service and BLM land management. The science doesn't change, the policy contact within which that science is used to inform decisions does change. If I can take my Geos hat off for a moment, put my other hat on, one of the other situations that is really, strikes me as very similar to this that I'm involved with, is I'm a member of the State Board of Forestry. And we're currently dealing with a very similar kind of, how do you balance differing benefits on state lands, state forests, with the need to raise the funds necessary to manage state forests? State forests are, the, the management of state forests does not receive any general fund support at all. It all comes as a share of the receipts from timber harvest on state forests.
Because of state forests are purchased for the purpose of maintaining and creating dollars on state?
Well, there's, there's actually two different kinds of state forests. One is, is the trust lands that are for schools. And the other source of state forest lands doesn't have that same fiduciary hook associated with it in their establishment. So, there's two kinds of state forests, you know, two flavors. But regardless, both flavors of state forests don't receive funds for their management anywhere except from profits from the management of those state forests. And so, we're, and at the moment, they're in a long-term situation, much like the counties are, in terms of receipts not meeting needs. And so, we're in the mid... And so we're in the middle of a very serious, tough discussion about how do you balance the competing needs and demands and benefits of state forests to meet the needs and desires of the people of the state and produce enough money to support the management of those lands? And all of us on the Board of Forestry understand that there are both benefits of cutting trees and benefits from leaving trees standing, and that there is no absolute that you can say about management of those lands. You have to look at them one by one and figure out what makes sense for them within a policy construct that balances these competing needs and benefits. There's no simple answer.
I've heard you...
And I think, you know, taking that hat off and putting GEOs hat back on, I think you're dealing with an organization in GEOs that understands that absolutes don't work on federal lands management. The science doesn't change depending on the policy construct, but your, the context in which you weigh maximum public good changes depending upon situations. And so that's kind of, that's the way this organization works. It's not a, you know...
I've heard you speak a lot on federal and state levels. What do you see your work here in Jackson County?
On forests or just in general? In general.
And you listed three different divisions of your organization. Can you give me examples of Jackson County with those three different divisions?
Sure.
Citing examples in each three.
So in our climate wise program, which is the program that helps communities address climate change, we actually did our very first project here in the road basin with...
Future, not current. Where do you see your work?
Oh, where do you see it? So it's, okay, yes, there's, even better. So in terms of climate, climate adaptation and reducing emissions, we have been working with a variety of partners on a renewable energy assessment and trying to figure out how do we increase renewable energy in the two county area. We had been working with a variety of folks, Jackson County being one of them, on our renewable energy assessment. And the next step of that is to develop task forces for the viable renewable energy sources so that we can figure out how do we get those underway?
Yeah, sort of what can we do to promote solar energy development, for instance, in the area? What can we do to promote energy conservation in the area? And there are a number of real strong partnership opportunities that we see that we could work with the county in development of both of those as well as the other renewable energy technologies that were identified as being feasible for development in this assessment that we partnered in having conducted. So that's, and that's actually, I'm senior fellow with GEOs Institute and I work with them on climate stuff. So if in fact we decide that there is a common goal between the county and GEOs Institute on development of renewable energy, I would be the one that would be working with the county staff and you all in figuring out what we could do together to promote those kinds of renewable energy development projects. And I'd love to, I'd love to work with you on that.
It's on the climate wise side. Let's go ahead.
Yeah, that's good, we'll move along. And then on the other side is continued work restoring creeks and tributaries.
Don't be a florist.
No, that's in our creek solution program. So the two primary places where we have worked with county and would like to continue to work with county on are renewable energy source development in the area and then also river restoration work, fish and wildlife habitat restoration. In terms of the forests, we don't do local tracking. We don't track local timber sales, local land management. That's not where our focus is. Our focus is on federal policy. And so we really don't have projects that are in Jackson County because we don't do on-the-ground projects on forest issues.
So let's use an example like the vibey timber sale that's...
We're not involved in it at all.
It's something that was cut 30 years ago, so that's something that maybe your scientists would support cutting because it's a previous cut that's just being reharvested?
We wouldn't support or not support it because we don't focus on that individual...
Individual projects, individual sales.
Sales, anywhere. We don't focus on here, we don't focus on anywhere else. We focus on the larger policy issues for the region.
Well, we want to move this along here.
Yeah, we don't want to...
And I appreciate that, recognizing that your organizations work on a global scale, literally and figuratively, well, does have local repercussions. And that's our concern, quite honestly, that's our concern. Go to Josephine County, go to Cave Junction, live at a mill just like 88 people, they're third generation, and tell them that, you know, sorry, you gotta sequester that. And yeah, maybe from a climate change situation, but tell those 88 families. Those are the kind of things, and we have had it here, but not, fortunately, we haven't been dependent on one mill. We've had several shut down. So that's a thing that we're struggling with. And I understand what you're saying, agree to disagree, but I just still have, just being real frank with you like I was in my office, I just, it's an issue that we'll have to deal with. I just have a, you know, because even though you say, and I believe you, if you're dealing on a larger sphere, if you will, those will have, could have repercussions here in Jackson County when you talk about, you know, federal policy and such. Remember, 48% of Orlando, this 2,800 acres in Jackson County is federal forest land. 48%? So those global policies dealing with federal forest land has a pretty doggone direct result what happens here in Jackson County. So that's a thing that we need to look at.
Right, right. And I think that's, you know, we want to be really straightforward with the places where we think we might have disagreements. Because any project that we might do together, we might be moving along and then have something happen out on the forest side of the world where we express an opinion that the county doesn't agree with. What we believe is that we live here, our staff lives here. We, our children go to school here, we support our communities here, we want to do what we can to make this community and the county and the places where we live, which are all scattered through the county, a better place to live. We have resources to bring, both technical and fundraising, and we can do things that help this county solve some of these problems. And I personally believe that we're called on to help our local communities. And I believe that the commission is called on to use whatever resources are available to it to help solve the problems that it sees. And I would just like to get us to the point where we're on those places where even if we're coming from different perspectives, we agree on the end product. It seems to me that we're sort of called by our communities to do what we can together. And so what I would formally request in whatever structure this works is that we be able to partner with Jackson County staff on restoration and clean energy projects, not, and leave the forest thing to the side. We will not come together on that question.
Assuming you have money for that right now.
Well, that's, well, but the question is...
We can raise money.
Yeah, the question is, you know, can we, can we agree to allow ourselves to work together in a place where we can work together? And that's, you know, that's my request and for you all to consider. I want to mindful of your time, I realize we've spent a good chunk of it. So I have materials for each of you. I've made the eight copies that they requested. And what you'll find in here is information on renewable energy work and an article on restoration that just sort of highlights Brian's work, as well as answers to some of the questions specifically that you asked. I've done a write-up for you all around our history and to clarify that for you. And just wanted to pass that information along to you so you'd have a sense of the breadth of the work that we've done and what we can bring to future partnerships.
All right. I appreciate you coming in. And that's something we'll continue to discuss, but thank you for your frankness and that's what we're looking for.
And so can I follow up with you after, you know, give you a little bit of time to think about what we've brought here today?
Well, my fellow commissioners, say.
Sure, I don't think that there would be a reason unless it was a project that came up.
Well, there won't be a project that comes up as a possibility unless we think that there's a possibility of a partnership. And the way that they develop is that, you know, if, does that make sense?
Well, okay, we can do, we can look at specific cases. I mean, yeah, we've done, I'd say, the restoration work down there on...
Will be a creek.
Right, that'll be a creek. I mean, yeah, you guys were vital in getting that done and I appreciate that. So there's definitely, and that's the reason we want to have this conversation, otherwise we'd have just said, no.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And just, and left it there, but we recognize that there is some benefit here. Just that we have this internal angst, if you will.
Yeah.
And a lot of that comes from your history and recognize what the past has been looking for as a fellow mention. So, yeah, I think we're open.
Okay. So I may, on some of the renewable energy, I'm going to contact you and see who we should talk to. Who should I, I mean, I've got some particular things we could go over.
That's fine, I think, yes, because the contracts all come to us anyway, so.
Okay.
That's one easy question, should this be a one-word answer?
Sure.
How many paid employees do you have? You talked about the people that donate to you, but how many paid employees do you have?
We have eight.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is not today, on 12/7, John?
I don't have much to report. I talked with Kelly right before the meeting and she didn't hear anything, but I will say I was on a conference call, AOC conference call yesterday, legislating, conference call. Mike Eliasen, who's an attorney for AOC, said that the funding that had been secured that we were wondering about, a total of $246,000.
So did they do that through just, was that additional funding that came to them or did they tell the department just to come up with?
I don't know how that's...
It was additional legislative...
But it was a weird deal because it started out, it was going to come out a deal, CD funding, but then Ways and Means wanted to, wanted itemization of what we were going to use it for, and so I'm not sure how that...
Okay, additional funding, okay. Well, that's good news, that's really good news, we can get that going, so. Anything else, John, on that?